All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of Worcester City Council being held this Monday, May 6th, 2024. Tonight's meeting is here in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube. And it is after 7:30. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on Monday, May 20th, 2024. And with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, if you'll stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 15th meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Warden, seconded by Mr. Abernathy. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Mr. President. Glad to be here, glad to have a full house again. Uh, been, you know, this is one of those weeks or meetings where we've had a three-week break, so it seems like we've been kind of away forever. Glad to have Barb back and hope your family's doing well and, uh, I think a lot of us made it to that service now, it was beautiful. We've met you, Husey's back on the other end of the life cycle type of thing. Normally, I kind of turn it over to Joel or something to throw in some additional things. I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Do you want to give the council an update real quick on what you've been doing?
Um, yeah, so April 10th, right before the last council meeting, my wife and I had our first child. Um, and so, yeah, we've been adjusting to that and had to watch the last meeting on YouTube, but I feel caught up and ready to go.
Good, that's great news.
And well-slept, too.
Well, the heart part's over, it's all downhill from here. See you.
Don't lie to them like that.
It's too late now anyhow.
And the third one, uh, third, I guess, piece of personal items. Mrs. Scavelli has an introduction to make. I think he was working in the council pretty well beforehand, but we'll do it for the record. John?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, have been lucky enough to hire our new deputy law director, Ms. Andrea Uller. Ms. Uller is here, you can stand up for everyone, please. Um, she, uh, she comes to us most recently out of private practice with, uh, with Critchfield. Uh, prior to that, she has worked in the public sector and private sector, and she was the head civil prosecutor for, uh, the county prosecutor's office. Um, she comes with a really great resume and lots of great experience, and we're really looking forward to working with her, and we hope you will, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, welcome.
Um, with that, I guess I'll give you a brief update on what we've been up to the last three weeks and also a few things coming up in the coming weeks. April 17th, I think I had previewed this last time, Senator Landis did come to town and do the, um, Lyric Theater project. Um, the county commissioners are, were the ones that, uh, got him here for that, but we were invited to tag along, and that went very well. And immediately following, we kind of set this up and it wasn't really a hijacking, but it was close to a hijacking, and we got him up to the fire station and got him through that and had a tour there. The state does have another round of funding available, so there's a bunch of projects that are going on, and so we just want to make sure that we have ours in the till. It's not like we're actually competing against others. The hospital's got a project that they'd like to, you know, that they've requested funding on, is another one. We just hope that, um, you know, some of that taxpayer money comes back to Wayne County, regardless of whether it's the Lyric, the hospital, the fire station, and we'll put it to good use. The same day, we had a meeting with Krista Kidney, Joel and I. A lot of you probably are familiar with Krista, she's worked with that 180, um, for a long time and really probably has been the point person on homelessness in the community. I had some involvement with Wayne Metro Housing before that, and when I got involved with them, I was told that she is the person to talk to on those issues. And it was interesting, I came, you know, when I started with the city, um, four months ago, I got the exact same report, is that Krista's the one to talk to about homelessness. So, um, unfortunately, Krista's took, taken a job with another service agency where she can work from home that's outside the community. So, good for her, bad for us, we wish her all the best, but we kind of seized the moment and took advantage and kind of did it, I suppose, the equivalent of an exit interview with her, and Joel and I had a chance to talk about some of the, some of the issues we're facing, and really, you know, it really had a good discussion, I think. I mean, not that there's any silver bullets laying out there, but it was, you know, confirmed a lot of things that I think we all had the impression of, and, and there's some challenges out there. I mean, there's nothing that's gonna go where very easily, so. Um, the WDC annual breakfast was, uh, it should be annual meeting breakfast, was on the 18th. I know we had a lot of council people in attendance for that one. That same day, had a meeting with the American Heart Association, they're doing their annual awareness heartwalk this fall. Scott Boyes from the hospital and Adam Briggs are co-chairing that event, and the city will be, uh, involved in that in some capacity. Same day, we had a luncheon for the 30th Annual Wayne County Child Abuse Prevention Community, excuse me, Prevention Community Luncheon, and, uh, that's certainly a worthy cause to support in and of itself, but maybe of particular interest to us is we had several police officers recognized for their service during the past year. So they, they recognized law enforcement officers from around the county, but several of our officers were involved. April 22nd, had a breakfast meeting with Professor McCall at the college, had a chance to talk over some of our shared interests and concerns, and, and that was productive. I had met her just in passing before that. April 22nd, we also started, uh, we are slowly working our way around through the city employees and trying to do small group meetings to give me a better chance to get to know them all and also to give them a better chance to know me, and we started with fire, but given the nature of them, you can't, they're not all here at one time, so it's taken us several weeks, but we've made through three separate meetings, have gotten to all the shifts, and I think those were worthwhile from both sides. Same day, we, that we started that off, we had the groundbreaking at Worcester Community Hospital. I've talked about that in the past, again, I think that is gonna be a great, great, um, expansion for the community, for the hospital. It's gonna help treat the people that they're seeing a lot of, and it's gonna make their employees safer, it's gonna make the patients safer. Uh, it's just a very nice, uh, uh, nice thing going on there. And as part of that, I also had a chance, uh, to present Bill Sharon with a plaque commemorating his service to the community, to the hospital over the years. And again, if you're familiar with where the hospital was, the condition it was in, when he came to town versus where it is now, it's, it's night and day. Um, so we have a lot to be thankful for there. We had a war card meeting, Lucas was at, uh, on behalf of the council. Pretty no, nothing, um, serious surfacing yet, things seem to be going fairly long, but knock on wood, we'll stay that way. We had a ma, mainstream meeting, uh, on April 25th. I had a conflict involving the Guardians, and Joel was there in attendance. I don't know if there's anything you want to report from that?
Um, if we did, and we'll fill you in a little bit later, uh, obviously you have legislation on the bed tax, we did just give them a preview at Main Street of who had applied, and it was coming here. We did give them a little preview also of the, um, recreational marijuana and what was being proposed and, and being run through planning commission and council ultimately. Um, one item of note, there's apparently an ax-throwing and golf simulator coming downtown in one of the, one of the vacant spaces down there, so.
Cool.
I think there's, they're two separate things, right?
Well, theoretically, they're in the same, they'll be in the same place.
But I don't think we're doing both at the same time.
Well, if you can't, you can throw an ax.
Um, April 30th, then, we had another groundbreaking ceremony for the jail expansion. Uh, we had a chance to meet Lieutenant Governor John Houston. Sue Smale did a good job of keeping me humble by introducing me to Lieutenant Governor as Mayor Brennaman. So, that was all good. Uh, I, yeah, and as Joel pointed out, that was the second time that week that got done. Judy Delaney did the same thing at, uh, at the Goodwill Breakfast. Uh, so that was a good week. I also got a fair amount of criticism, I got my picture in the paper twice within a week with a shovel in my hand, and multiple people have asked me when the last time I did any manual labor, let alone, so. It's, uh, it was pick-on-bob week, I guess. Um, on the May 1st, Joel and I presented to the Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Worcester class, I think probably some of you here have gone through that program. They had, I think they did, I'm not sure if that's been their format in the past, but they did an all-day event, and we had about a 45-minute, well, Jen was in the class, so she could tell you exactly what was going on, but they had a full day, I think we had 45 minutes to summarize everything we do in the city Worcester government, so that was like speed reading at, uh...
Why don't you do it at the extra time?
Yeah. Good one. Um, but, uh, so that was a very condensed overview of city government. May 2nd, we attended the Goodwill Annual Breakfast, um, we had a table there. Uh, again, another event that, uh, another organization does a world of good in the community, but again, uh, marked by the retirement of Judy Delaney. So, I, as I put these notes together, I think, man, there's a common theme here. Krista Kidney, Bill Sharon, Judy Delaney, uh, we're talking about a lot of talent and experience, uh, in the community that stepping aside, and good for them, you know, job well done, but it kind of, you know, for the people waiting in the wings, uh, those are big shoes to fill all the way around. And then, uh, the last piece, just last Friday, late enough in the afternoon Friday that did not make Joel's newsletter, is we had a big announcement from Governor DeWine's office, and I'll let Joel fill, fill in the rest on that.
Uh, yeah, we had, there was a, a pot of money that was, we became aware of, I think it was early this year, so this was a pretty quick turnaround of some, um, safety money, uh, safety traffic projects through, uh, through ODOT. And one of the things we had been talking over the last couple of years with, um, with OSU on the south end about was a connection there, some kind of a connection, there's not a good connection for pedestrians or bikes to get from downtown to the campus. Um, so, and that was, that was something that was on their master planning list as well, is some kind of connection. So, we put together a project to, uh, put kind of a shared use path, get across the bridge and, and get up to the campus, and just found out late Friday that, um, that we were awarded, awarded funds for that. So, we'll get, we'll get busy. I believe it's for, with their FY 25-26, um, year. Um, so it was 40.9 million, it was 27 projects across this, across the state. Um, so we were one of those, those 27, and, uh, I believe it was in the $800,000 range that we got for that. So, so we just found this out, uh, Friday, and we'll be working on a design to get that done.
Great.
So, it was a little interesting, I, I happened to be sitting outside or walking by Joel's office as, uh, he's, you know, on his computer, and he said something to the effect of, "I can't believe this." And, you know, that's not necessarily where you want to hear, but fortunately, it was all good news, but, uh, it was a little heavy on the ropes for a minute. Okay, upcoming events, uh, apologize for taking up so much of the time here. Uh, tomorrow morning at 9:30, we are doing a dedication down at the square of the pavilion in recognition of the Siemens Corporation's 75th anniversary in business, and in particular, and getting what sets them apart, um, they dedicated a lot of material for that pavilion there, um, to say nothing of Cross Creek Park and all that, but, um, so that's gonna take place there. Friday, uh, 180 is having an open house over the noon hour at the Milltown Professional Building. Um, also that evening, apparently there's a big band dance, big band dance, I just said it right, on the, uh, square. Uh, next Monday, I think we've got people coming in, both the new director of the Counseling Center and a representative from the Ohio EPA, totally unrelated, separate meetings, but reading with them. Uh, we are also meeting with the group next week that did the spring run allotment and to talk about development of their next project, which is the one at the northwest corner of, uh, Silver Road and Mechanicsburg Road. Uh, excited about that moving forward. Uh, May 20th, I don't know if you saw in Joel's memo that went out last week, May 20th is our next council meeting, and Joel is hoping that the fire station is gonna be in good enough condition for at least the city council to have a tour, and...
Probably June, I, I should've said June, the second one in June.
All right.
Yeah, sorry.
Get that question.
Never mind.
Never mind. So, tentatively, I guess, maybe look at that June date, and we'll, again, depending on how construction goes, but we're gonna try to get a tour in before the, we break for summer recess. May 22nd, we have our first meeting of the steering committee for the review of the zoning code, a number of you involved with that. May 25th, Freelander Pool and Nice Field Spray Ground opened, uh, with Christmas run opening three days later, so you have three, three weeks to get in swimsuit shape, so just heads up. Uh, May 27th, Memorial Day Parade, I know there's been plans underway for that, I've been contacted about that, learned I have apparently some responsibilities for that. Then finally, July 4th, planning is underway, I've seen pieces of that, and I will make, that's just my excuse to mention that as a thank you to the Exchange Club for their event Friday night as a fundraising, uh, then for that, appreciate their support financially to make that, ensure that that event happens, um, and, uh, also want to thank all those that participated. So, that's it, uh, kind of a, not a real complicated agenda tonight. We've got two pieces of business on third reading because we weren't able to suspend the rules last time. Um, the one is the ordinance regarding raising the bid limit from $50,000 to $75,000, we've talked about that in the past. We think this will enable us to operate more efficiently and, and also save money doing it for the city. Um, there's also a separate question about whether or not you want to increase the threshold for, um, council action from $50,000 to $75,000. That's really a separate question, and that's really kind of a council decision, but the first piece of that we would like to see because we think that will save the taxpayers' money. Um, the second one is an ordinance permitting alcohol outside of Freelander Chalet in a designated outdoor area, that's now close to completion, and Barb Knappich has both those pieces of legislation on third reading. We have two pieces on second reading, again, Barb has both of those, a rezoning request involving the Dairy Queen and surrounding properties that will involve a public hearing tonight, um, that'll take place soon as I get done with this. Um, and then a customary and, uh, usual request for road salt. This one is a little bit of an urgency, we're a little overextended on this one because we should've gotten it approved last meeting, um, so we're operating under the good graces of, uh, ODOT at this point on that one. I will try my best not to ask for, you know, urgent action on items that don't require it, but this one really kind of requires it. Um, and again, glad to have Barb back and helping us, want to thank Jen again for stepping in and covering last, uh, meeting for, for her absence.
Thank you.
Um, we've got five new items. The, um, the first two of these are, are budgeted, so do not require three readings. The last three items do, but only the last two, again, I'm gonna say the last two do have some sense of urgency to them, that, uh, those are Mr. Malta's, I think he'll go into a little bit more detail. Um, just a real quick synopsis on them, the first one is Ms. Knappich again, involving amendments to our civil service rules, then Ms. Knappich again, replacement pages for the Worcester codified ordinances. Mr. Aberdathy's got a bed tax allocations provision, and then two for Mr. Malta, again, these are the ones, they do require third readings, but I would ask that you seriously consider suspending the rules on those. Uh, they involve professional services contract for repairs to interceptor wells and professional services contract for three stripping towers. And again, we'll let you go a lot, I'll keep my mouth shut once we get to those, but that's our thoughts from the administration side on the urgency of those two items. Last thing I want to touch on are Joel's biweekly, excuse me, bi-monthly memos. Um, hope you find those informative and useful, um, and I think I've said this before, but feel free to pass those along. We really don't have a city newsletter yet, we may be trending in that direction, but, you know, everything in there is public information, and we think we've got a good story to tell. We have a lot going on, uh, and we want the community to be aware of that. We'll try to keep those up through the summer, I'm not sure, uh, shikle that we drove beforehand, even though we're not meeting, we'll try to get them out twice a month, because even though we're not gonna meet for two months, the activity of the city keeps happening. And in fact, probably, given construction season, there's probably more construction activity during those two months than there is any other time. Um, I particularly appreciate the pictures Joel included, the progress being made at Fire Station Number One, Freelander Chalet, Cross Creek Playground, and the pickleball courts. Um, we're making real progress there. Also, I want to make special mention of the 60 volunteers from Worcester Nazarene Church that showed up for a volunteer workday at Oak Hill Park on April 20. Uh, they made a, really made a difference with how much they got accomplished that day. And then finally, Joel stuck in there a little recap of where we stand on utility aggregation. That, that seems to be one of those things we've dealt with in fits and starts where we had a lot of activity and then nothing for a long time while we waited for other things to happen, and now there's gonna be a flurry of activity again, and, you know, I've gotten some questions about it, I'm guessing you probably all have too, so I'd ask if Joel could give just a quick synopsis of where we stand on that for council's benefit, the audience's benefit, and anybody that might be listening in.
Sure, so our consultant went out and did, received bids for electric and gas, um, and we got the, uh, the low back on that, we had to review the contract for that, um, have legal review that, sent that back, um, got that signed, sent back to the provider, and so we're just waiting to get that back now. So as soon as we get that back, which could be any, any day now, um, that's when, some of, we're, we're planning the first week of June is when we'll send the opt-out letters, um, and people will have, so they'll get the letter, and they'll have 21 days at that point then to opt out. Um, and we'll do more than send the opt-out letters, we'll be, we'll be putting things on our social media and website, trying to press releases out, things like that. Um, which puts you about to the, to the first week of July, so everybody that did not opt out, or in the case where people have had contracts and want to opt in, they can also opt in during that time. Um, that's when they'll get the letters that say, you know, "You did not opt out, you're in the new aggregation program, um, your supplier's going to change." They still have seven days in case they miss something, so another seven days, they can say, "Hey, I didn't do this, you know, please remove me," if they don't want to do that. And then, uh, but after that seven days, that's when it's finalized, so by mid-July, that's when the aggregation will start for electric. And then gas will do the same thing, um, probably in the September timeframe, that's when we'll do the same thing for gas.
Great.
And we're, we're gonna make sure, we're gonna get free copies of the letters so that we know exactly what they look like, and we can share those with our residents so they know exactly, you know, this is the letter for aggregation, it's not somebody else, you know, trying to, trying to jump in and get people to sign up for contracts.
God bless you.
I just, can I ask a question real quick? I, I swear I asked this before and I can't remember.
Joel.
Will, will, everybody that lives in the city, if they don't opt out, will their providers at that point be notified and that they'll just automatically terminate service at that point?
As long as they do not already have a contract. So some people, like myself, I, you know, I signed up for a, a two-year contract with, you know...
Like if you just say, "Hey, turn on my power, and I moved into this house and I need to turn on my power," just...
So...
So there wasn't like under a contract, it's just, "Hey, AEP, you're my provider, I just need power, turn it on."
Yes, they would have the option of either calling, getting their own contract, or opting into the, uh, to the aggregation.
So, so as long as they don't opt out, they don't have to contact anybody?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other one to promote? All right, well, again, apologies for taking up so much of your council's time tonight, um, and, uh, you know, we threw a lot of information at you, but hope you found it useful and have a great meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we have no petitions this evening, we do have a couple people who have signed up to communicate. I believe both of them are related to the public hearing on rezoning, which at this point, I would assume, uh, both you gentlemen would prefer just to speak during the, uh, during the public hearing related to the, to the rezoning? All right, very good. All right, well, with that, um, we'll move into committee reports, which we have no committee reports.
I do need to, uh, on behalf of finance, I do need to call for a public hearing for the 2025 city tax budget on the June 3rd council meeting.
Okay, so that, that's not a public hearing, that's just a committee meeting?
Uh, per Andre, it says I need to call for a public hearing.
All right, very good, okay. So that's June 3rd, we'll do that during the, the council meeting?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. And with that, we do have a public hearing, and that will be led by Ms. Knappich, so the floor is yours.
Yes, um, we are to hold a public meeting concerning, let me make sure I've got the right ordinance here. Um, concerning ordinance number 2024-15, this is a, uh, ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Worcester to rezone land to C3, which is general commercial, uh, for property that's located on the southeast corner of East Smithville Western and Cleveland Roads. Uh, it's my understanding that the plan there is to rezone that, um, area, people are familiar, if you look at that piece parcel of land, there's Dairy Queen, and then there's nothing, and an open lot. Um, it's my understanding that the reason for rezoning that is so that, um, they, there's a, a plan to put in a Dairy Queen, a, it expanded Dairy Queen with better drive-through, better parking, and, um, with that said, I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Christopher Green, president of Green Bag Properties, I live at 1097 Greensview Drive in Worcester. We own, uh, multiple commercial and residential inside and outside the city of Worcester. We have four parcels, and they are, are adjacent to the proposed area to be rezoned. We have two to the south and two to the east. The two to the east are currently R1. I'm here to speak, uh, my plan is to work with attorney Doug Drujsho, a local engineering firm, to rezone my two parcels, as I feel as though with the change from R1 to the property just to the west of me to C3, it doesn't make a lot of sense financially for me to construct a single-family home there, being next to two drive-throughs that are gonna be operated 15, 16 hours a day. Um, so, with that being said, I just wanted to give you some forewarning that, um, our plan as our company's plan is to rezone our two parcels from, not to commercial, but mainly to a multifamily, to create a buffer zone before, between the R1 properties and the C3 properties. I've spoken with council member Chris Malta, since it's in his district, and we've talked about some possible ideas, and I have attorney Drujsho here to give you some information on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Drujsho, 225 North Marcus Street, following up on what Chris said, I'd like to hand to you, if I could, this is outlined in black, the property in question that he's talking about. And, long story short, what we're, what we're saying is, we're not here to oppose the legislative action that is on the agenda for tonight to rezone, what we call Dairy Queen property, but basically just saying that, okay, in fairness, if that happens, then the property immediately next door doesn't make any sense to be R1 anymore. And so this is just sort of a heads up that we hope to come back to you before too long. I want to turn that off. We hope to come back to you before too long to see if the rezoning of that probably R2 or R3 something along that line, have met with Vince, we've talked about that. R2 or R3 something along that line. I've met with Vince, we've talked about this, and there's a couple kind of tricky things here, that there are two lots there. One has frontage on Smithville Western, the other comes into Young Drive. And so there's a question Vince and I are trying to work through. Do you have two lots, one with frontage on each side, or do you have one lot that has frontage, or that has two entrances, which generally is against the code unless it would get a hearing? So there's a number of things like that that we have to work through. That's why you have a fairly crude hand-done drawing tonight, whereas, as Chris said, we hired a civil engineering firm to work with us, once we get a drawing from them, what it could look like, what, what might make sense there. And I'll meet with Vince, and we'll go over that, and we have to go through the planning commission before we come back here. Just sort of a heads up that we think that's a fair thing to do, is if the property next door is going to be a Dairy Queen, doesn't make sense for the immediately adjacent property to be R1. The questions have to answer them. I'd like to see you sometime in the future.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the issue of rezoning this property at the corner of Smithville Western and Route 3? Anyone from the public? Anyone from council have any comments or concerns that they would like to express? In that case, we'll close the public meeting, public hearing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Knappick. And with that, we'll move on to unfinished business, third reading of ordinance 2024-08. Ms. Hamilton, please read that for us.
Ordinance number 2024-08, an ordinance amending Chapter 160 bidding procedures and contract requirements of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, by increasing the amount of the limit for competitive bidding.
All right. Ms. Knappick, floor is yours.
Yes. I was not here at the last meeting, so I don't know what discussion was had. I was here at the meeting prior to that when this was first introduced, and we did have some discussion with respect to this ordinance. Right now, the bid max for the city is, for something to go out to bid, would be $50,000, and the city would like to increase that to $75,000, simply because, and it makes sense, that it's been, I believe, 11 years since there's been any increase, or since that $50,000 was set. Obviously, things are more expensive, things have raised in price, and the state has actually passed legislation that has increased the bid limits to $75,000, as opposed to $50,000 where we are now. And that is where the city would like to go. It's my understanding, this does not include any changes to the approval process, so that this, that council's approval still, there has to be approval from council over the $50,000. Is that correct?
Correct. That was the original version that was submitted.
Right.
At, there was some discussion at that meeting about just raising both of those to $75,000. So at the last meeting, we did hand out an alternate version of the legislation that, that eliminated that second tier, so just both was 75. And I believe Ms. Hamilton emailed another copy of that, for those that weren't there this past week, just for your, your review and consideration.
Thank you. So we are looking at this piece of legislation, both increases the bid limit and where city council has to.
So, so what's on the agenda is the one that leaves the 50 for council approval, but raises the bid limit to 75?
That's what I want to make sure of.
The one, we, we also gave an alternate version. If you so choose, you could substitute that one, if you chose to do that.
I'm not going to choose to. Thank you. I think we're going to stay where we're at for right now, unless anybody has any objections, any, any further conversation and input from council. As I said, I was not here at the last meeting. I watched the meeting on YouTube, but, you know, it would be interesting, interest, I would be interested in hearing personally council members' position on this.
I have one. I'm going to be reading tonight the cleaning of the stripping towers. They used to always be 50,000 or less. It is now 60. This is our drinking water. We don't have any choice in this matter. I mean, we do, however, it's not going to be a good one if we say no.
Right.
So this is an example where I feel this should just go right through. 75 is a very fair threshold, in my opinion. That's where I stand.
For the bidding. And, and I guess my question is for the other council members, where do you feel on the alternative piece of legislation that would allow the, not only the bid limit, but the council approval limit to go to $75,000?
Ms. Knappick, we, we talked a little bit back and forth about this at the last meeting, and there's pros and cons for both. We could also pass the legislation as presented this evening, and, you know, we start getting inundated with these reviewing of, oh gosh, it was 50, you know, we start getting lots of legislation, and, and it's slowing things down, and we're not really benefiting a whole lot from reviewing those smaller contracts. We could always amend it at a later time, if, if you'd like to just try this first. I think that's kind of where I was with it. I didn't have a problem necessarily doing them both at once, but there's no reason to not just do it as presented, and, and literally, let's maybe just go the summer, and then when we come back, we should revisit the issue, perhaps.
I think that I, I would ask the question is, what, what are we, what are we solving for both ways? So if we're solving for, what are we solving for by keeping it at 50, and what are we solving for by moving it to 75? So for solving for by moving it to 75 is, we're trying to be more efficient. So like, your example is actually a good example.
Right.
Is, do we want to wait two weeks, or hey, what if we're in the middle of summer, and we're on a summer break? Now it's two months, and now they got to sit and wait two months, and they can't move on something. What are we solving for by leaving it at 50? Is it just so we can hold, look at something at a $25,000 differential? Is, are we going to stop something egregious? Is $25,000 significantly egregious that we're going to stop? So, to me, I'm, I'm citing more on this end of, I'm going to trust these folks that are kind of operating the city on a day-to-day, that it's $25,000 more dollars in a high-inflationary period. The state has gone to say, hey, we bumped it up for cities. I tend to think the $75,000 is okay. I just start, if we were, if we didn't have the summer break, I may not feel that way, but I worry, if we're in a mode where we're out for two months, and something serious comes up, and we're not here, that, that kind of concerns me. But that's, that's just where I stand.
And, and that's for the bid map, the bid?
For the, for...
Or for both?
For both.
For both. Okay.
I think everyone's made great points. The one that I would like to reiterate that was made in some of our previous discussions, is, has to do with the amount of money that is spent when the city goes out for bid. So, in addition to raising this $25,000 threshold, we'll also look to be recouping some of that, or, or saving some money anyways, as we lessen the number of bids that we need to request. But I see no reason to, I mean, I'm fine with what Mr. Meyer said. Let's just proceed with, with what we have before us this evening, and, you know, if we find that, yeah, we're inundated with these later, that, you know, it's, it's so simple for Joel to spend our money now that we need to rush the approval process, we can revisit this, but...
That's, that's a position that I, I'm, and that's a position I'm taking as well.
Okay.
Does anyone else want to weigh in before I go forward and move on this?
I guess to be a contrarian, so I do agree, I like the two-tiered system kind of more than the three-tiered. I guess if, and I'm not saying Mr. Meyer's tactic is a horrible idea, but procedurally, would we then look to vote this down to reintroduce the new?
No, no, we would approve this as is, and then revisit the other limit at a later time.
So if you, if, and obviously, we know inside the administration's on this, but if you, if someone on council tonight would like to propose the amended version, or the other version that was sent to you, that's just the two-tiered, what you would do tonight is you'd move to amend the legislation to reflect the substituted version that was sent to you, and then you could vote on whether or not anyone would amend that. If that amendment failed, then you would move forward on the legislation as is. If it passed, then the amendment would, then the legislation would move forward on, as amended, and you'd either pass or fail. But each motion would be in the affirmative, so every motion always needs to be in the affirmative.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. And also to Mr. Abern at this point, I mean, in the summer break, I get it, you know, we're not here, but we can always be called to an emergency council if...
I was going to, I was going to point that out.
This changes the law forever, so...
Right.
Summer break's kind of a little quirk.
Yeah.
And, and I'm kind of inclined to go step by step, do this first, and then...
Given the changes, I will tell you that it's probably likely that we may have to have special meetings, given these changes. And most of that's just, honestly, it's because of inflation. So where we're at with 75 right now, those things would have been, like Mr. Maltis was saying, those things would have been 50,000 not that long ago. And that's why the state's changed it, and that's why we're asking to change it now. So I would, I do see an increased likelihood of a special meeting.
And that's something I think that we need to look at. We need to see, I agree with, with Mr. Meyer, how this develops, and what comes through. Quite frankly, in most things, I'd like to think that we would be anticipating and have these in the budget already at the appropriate amount, so that we don't have to run into this. We don't have to come back to council and ask for them to approve that $25,000 difference. But...
If it's over 50, then the way the legislative, we will be coming back.
Yes. I understand.
Regardless, we could have, we could have planned it ahead five years, and, you know, but if it's over, over 50, we'll be coming, and let, you know, between 15 and 75, we will be coming back.
Same as it's been for the last 10 years.
Right.
So...
I was just going to say, that's, that's exactly what we, we have been doing.
To answer your other question, Mr. Abern, what we're solving here is that this actually, this, a similar version of this legislation was rejected by the last council, and was, and left, voted to be, remain at 50 for everything. So what we're trying to do is give a little bit of a grace based on the city's concerns over the bids and the cost of things going up. It made more sense to revisit this issue, but it actually had failed in the past.
And just maybe to clarify Mr. Scavelli's comment, the administration probably would like to see both sides go up, but we feel much more strongly about that first side. That second side really comes back to council. I mean, there could be some problems and inconvenience to us, but in all likelihood, the biggest change is, that'd be 15 to 20 pieces of legislation over the course of the next year that you wouldn't have seen otherwise, but there's no bidding required, there's no extra expense other than the paperwork involved in, with Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Scavelli in drafting and putting before you and acting on them. But, whereas the bid process actually adds delay and expense.
Right.
So, again, that, feel strongly about that one. The other one, you know, if you pass tonight, fine. If you don't, you know, you could see it in the fall, or sometime in a later date, but...
Well, it may be something that we bring up because we see so much of the, so many of these things, and then at that point, we can decide as, as council whether we want to do this, make this change. But I agree, for right now, the expense to the city lies in the bidding, not the budgeting. So, okay. With that said, are there any other comments? Okay. Well, I'm going to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll and adopt.
Myers?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Malta?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Husey?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 2024-08 has been adopted.
Hopefully, that'll help you guys out a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Second item, ordinance 2024-14. Ms. Hamilton, please read that for us.
Ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance amending Chapter 539.04, liquor prohibited without a permit of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappick, floor is yours.
Yep. This is the ordinance that the mayor talked about, which would allow rezoning, or I'm sorry, not rezoning, a, would allow amending of Chapter 539.04 of the liquor, to allow liquor to be served at Friedlander Chalet in an outdoor area. At the last meeting I attended, that we introduced this, talked about, there's, there's a porch that people will want to use for various parties. I'm thinking weddings and those types of celebrations, where they might want to take their liquor out, and, you know, have a champagne toast on the balcony, or on the, on the porch, whatever it may be. But it's a designated area. It will be specific, and it'll be, there'll be signage that, that there's a designated area that people can't go past, somewhat like, somewhat like Dora Downtown, you know, look, no alcohol beyond this point. And for each of these events, there will also be someone from the City Parks and Recreation Department who will be present at these events. So I personally don't have a concern about anything getting out of hand, and people taking alcohol down by the pool, or any, anything like that. I think this makes Friedlander Park Chalet much more marketable for events. As I said, it's a beautiful location. It would make a great location for a wedding reception, small wedding reception, or other parties such as that graduation, college graduation in Zeta Delta. Yes?
I'll add one thing. It is fenced as well.
Oh, okay. It is fenced, so there's not going to be any worry about people wandering down to, to the pool with, with their alcoholic drinks. So with that being said, since Ms. Warden was kind enough to, to move this ordinance forward from last meeting, I will make a motion to adopt.
All right. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappick. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Malta?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Husey?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
All right. Motion has been adopted.
Can I ask a question for clarification real quick on that one?
Absolutely, since I didn't...
Sorry. I was waiting for a...
My apologies.
Um, I just want to, Ms. Knappick mentioned a balcony. I think that was, that was in question when Ashley was here explaining. So I think this is just the patio, is that correct? Not the balcony that overlooks the pool?
Just, just the patio.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. As, when I said that, I remembered that conversation. So thank you for clarifying that.
And again, in, in Joel's memo, if you go to the back page, it shows that patio area with the fencing around it. And, you know, really what we're just doing is allowing what is now permitted inside the chalet to happen on that, on that restricted patio area.
So depending on the success, we may end up making the patio bigger at some point, huh?
You can't interfere with seeing volleyball.
Well, that's true.
I suppose.
They bring their own coolers.
All right. Well, we'll move on to ordinance 2024-15, but Ms. Hamilton, would you please read that for us?
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to C3, general commercial, for property located on the southeast corner of East Smithville Western and Cleveland Roads.
All right. Ms. Knappick, floor is yours.
Yes. Again, thank you to Ms. Warden for introducing this at the last meeting. This is, was, this ordinance is the topic of the public hearing this evening about the rezoning of property on the corner of, on southeast corner of Smithville Western Road and Cleveland Road, or Route 3. And the purpose for this, it's, again, it's my understanding, it will be to rebuild a newer and more accessible Dairy Queen, which is pretty exciting, because I don't like to wait in line for my Peanut Buster Parfaits. But I, I looked at the plans. It looks like it really does make a lot of sense to expand this, and there'll be three entryways and three exit ways, which will be very nice for the community, a lot of parking. And we, other than, I understand at the last meeting, there were some people who were concerned about traffic in the area, but again, I looked at that, and there are three entrances, three exits on various sides. There's lots of parking. It doesn't appear that it would be, it actually appears that the park, the traffic situation would be would be better than it is currently because it's more accessible and the drive-through is better and it's easier. So based on that and the testimony that we heard today, which, you know, I would love to see that corner become a very nice, if it's commercial, commercial area in the community. There are a lot of properties, there are some properties up there that are abandoned or closed, and it would be nice to be able to see that revitalized because it is a significant entryway into the city. So this could be a very good first start to that. Based on that and the fact that we did not hear any objections from the public at the hearing today, I'm going to make a motion to move this to third and final reading.
All right. Motion to move to third and final, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, if you call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
All right. The rules have been suspended. What do you have, do you have a motion for us, Ms. Knappich?
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance twenty-two-four dash fifteen's been adopted. Our next item, which is also on second reading, Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-three, but before Ms. Knappich, we'll have Ms. Hamilton read that for us, please.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract to participate in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, thank you, Ms. Warden, for bringing this forward last week. This is kind of a standard thing we do each year as we try to participate with ODOT in their winter road salt contract. ODOT, because of as much salt as they need, can contract for much more salt at a much lower rate than the City of Worcester could on its own or by itself. So it's a really good idea for any political subdivision to go in with ODOT on their contract. Then what we do is that we agree to purchase a minimum of ninety percent of our requested salt contracts or quantities from, from the awarded salt supplier during the contract's effective period. It also makes sense because then our folks don't have to take the time and do the research to go out and look for other alternative sources of road salt for better prices. It's just, it's just a good deal for the city. It's a cost saver, it's a time saver. So I bet that's what this is about, and because we need to submit the resolution, a passed resolution, to ODOT ASAP, I'm going to move to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading tonight.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Abernathy. If you ask me so I don't rush this along, is there any conversation that anybody wants to have on this? It is pretty straightforward, and we only do it annually. All right. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
All right. Motion to suspend is approved. Do you have a motion for us, Ms. Knappich?
Yes, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, with that, that was our last of our unfinished business, and we now have our new business. And it's still gonna be the Ms. Knappich Show for the next couple, couple pieces here.
That's what I get for missing meetings.
Yeah. At least she didn't get elected president or anything like that. All right, with that, ordinance twenty-two-four dash sixteen, Ms. Hamilton, please read that for us.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash sixteen, an ordinance amending Chapter 133 Civil Service Rules and Regulations of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Ms. Knappich, floor is yours.
Okay, this is an amendment to the Civil Service Rules and Regulations for the City of Worcester, and it's actually, I'm gonna ask Chief Fisher to speak on this matter, but it's actually to make it easier and quicker for the City of Worcester to hire lateral police officers. And obviously, that's something that we want to do. You know, it's, it's nice when you have people who are already trained, already experienced, already efficient at their policing jobs, and we can bring them in, a lot of their training's already done, they're proven quantity, so to speak. And so Chief Fisher, would you?
Yeah, and I tend to talk in layman's terms, so Jeanette's here, she can set me straight if I screw up the details. But what you'll notice in the changes is originally police and fire lateral were together, they've split those apart. So in the changes, you'll see they took police officer out and let fire and then wrote a new section for police. Doesn't change our process as far as background, psychological interview, all that's the same. What it does is currently, right now, we have to give a written test even for laterals in order to rank them for civil service. We don't have to do that anymore. You could literally send it, turn in an application Monday. We interview you Tuesday, do your background Wednesday, your psych Thursday, you can be hired by Friday, again, assuming all those things work that fast, and they don't. But it just expedites the process, and then it would go to the Civil Service Commission to sign off on. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but I know the Civil Service Commission did write a letter that most of you should have in your packet agreeing with the proposed changes. So this is just to help make it a little easier for us. The other small thing you'll see is for the new hire test to go from three to ten. Civil Service Commission is only meeting once a month. So when you're only working with three at a time, when you take one or two off, which could happen in a matter of days, you, in theory, then have to wait a month for them to meet again, to put new names on the list. Where if we start with a bigger group, it lets us just work further ahead before we have to go back to them. Again, if they were meeting once a week, this probably wouldn't be an issue, but that's just not what's happening. Is there anything, Jeanette?
That was what I was gonna ask also. We have our Manager of Human Resources here, and I know that you have to deal with all of these things on a day-to-day basis. Is there any, anything that's concerning to you in this?
He didn't get that. So, so, so we are actually part of an HR group, it's a Northeast Ohio group of municipalities, and we meet and share information on a regular basis. And the last meeting that we had, we discussed civil service because this is an issue that's happening across the state and having a difficulty hiring police officers. And so the recommendations that we're making are actually also what our counterparts are doing. So this allows us to be more competitive, we can look at applicants quicker, and we actually got the idea of the lateral transfer and speeding up this process from some other municipalities that have done that to try to become more competitive. So we're just constantly looking for ways to attract people and to make the process efficient so that we can hire quickly. And, you know, we're still not fully staffed in the Police Department, we've been working on that for a long time, so hopefully this will help.
Excellent.
And it's gonna get, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Law enforcement statewide is down twenty percent.
Right.
So that's part of it. The other problem you have is right now, there's ten of us either in deferred retirement or will be eligible to retire in the next two years. So it's, yeah.
Well, that, that makes it even a bit more urgent then, that we do that. I want to thank both of you for being here and giving us that background information because it helps to like put it in context, I think, and to know, and to let the community know why we're, we're doing this, and it's obviously, and importantly, for public safety.
Sure.
And thank you so much for bringing that, both of you, to council and to the Civil Service Committee for doing, approving and supporting this as well. So based on that, I'm going to move to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading tonight so that we can get our complement of police officers full and have them fully staffed. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules of council, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Is there any conversation that council needs to have on this? No?
I did just have one question.
Certainly.
All right, this is more Jeanette or Chief Fisher. For the lateral hires, do those folks come in at the starting wage then for patrolmen or is there like an experience base? I guess how's that work?
Basically, they come in based on their experience. So if, and I'm, I'm just gonna make some stuff up, Steve, let's say top pay is five years. If they had five years someplace else, they would come in at, at top pay and that benefit level. What they don't come in with is that seniority. So even though you may have worked, we have an lateral officer we hired from Akron who spent sixteen years there, he still, when he came in, he came in at, at the bottom of the seniority list.
Okay.
Right? But because of his time, he came in with paid benefits commensurate with what our top officer would be.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hamilton, if you call the, call the roll on the suspension of the rules, please.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Okay. Rules have been suspended. Do you have a motion for us, Ms. Knappich?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Gaffey.
Let me draw with you guys.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Okay. All right, ordinance is approved. You can go find us some police officers.
But we're at that age.
All right. First reading of ordinance twenty-two-four dash seventeen, and this is some updates to our codified ordinances, but before Ms. Knappich can give us that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read that for us.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash seventeen, an ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the codified ordinances and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right. Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is something that we do on a fairly, a regular basis, that when we pass ordinances, we make changes, we make amendments, we, we replace something with a different ordinance. Obviously, we need to make the changes to the codified ordinances for the city, and that it's, it's essentially a housekeeping matter. And it just updates our, our city code and makes sure that everything is current so that when people go to look, there's no confusion, the most current ordinances are, are there. Because it is a housekeeping matter, because I don't, I looked through all this, I didn't see anything that was controversial, I mean, nothing that we haven't voted on or anything like that, it's just, you know, changes and, and to put in the replacement pages. So I'm going to move to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading as well.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Any other comments from any of the council members? All right. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules has passed. Ms. Knappich?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, please.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Malta. Mr. Malta, okay, sorry about that. You caught my, the good ear, not my better ear. All right. Ms. Hamilton, if you please call the roll.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Malta.
Yes.
Gaffey.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance has been approved, has been adopted. All right, well now, we'll give Ms. Knappich a rest and we'll move on, let Mr. Abernathy have, have a shot here. But before that, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read the, read the next resolution.
Resolution number twenty-two-four dash thirty-one, a resolution authorizing grants for economic development purposes and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, I finally get to give away grant money instead of looking to do debt, so this is gonna be bed tax, the competitive bed tax grants. So we had four applicants, so four winners. In this, it's gonna be Lyric Theater for thirty thousand, the Ohio Light Opera for fifteen thousand, the Wayne Center for the Arts, thirty-five thousand, and the Wayne County Fair for twelve thousand. So Phil, anything else you want to add on that?
Just that we received only four applications. The projects are all looking to get kicked off pretty soon. Obviously, the fair would like to have theirs done before this year because it's their, how many years? Oh, my goodness.
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five. And obviously, the Lyric is looking to open in the fall, so we'd like to get these out as soon as possible.
I see the full amount is budgeted, so I don't believe I need to suspend any rules. So unless there's any discussion, I motion to adopt.
Do we need to suspend the rules? I see it's got three readings on here.
Yeah, we budgeted the money, you remember back?
Oh, I know we budgeted the money, but it's just, again, the paperwork doesn't verify that factoid, so, all right. Well, that's fine. If that's, that is correct, so.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second. Go ahead, Jeanette.
Ms. Ms. Warden, all right, seconds?
You got to talk enough, Barb. I have talked enough tonight.
Ms. Hamilton, if you call the, call the roll on the motion to adopt, please?
Warden?
Yes.
Husey?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Malta?
Yes.
All right, resolution is adopted. Next two items are Mr. Malta, and with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read Resolution 2024-32, please.
Resolution number 2024-32, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract for repairs to four interceptor wells and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
So as stated earlier, you know, I have two of these tonight, this one is for $100,000, but it is for our wells, for our water, these wells are 40-plus years old, they did do video inspection, they are plugged with iron, so that's what they're going to go clean out, purpose of it. Are there any questions? I guess we'd like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta, is there a second?
Wait, believe we do need to suspend the rules on this one. Shows online it's budgeted.
How say you, administration?
No, are they? Okay.
I may have contributed to that problem because I think in my intro, I said these three, these are three readings.
That's when I wrote that down, yes.
Yeah, you did kind of.
But I wasn't going to accuse anyone, Mr. Reynolds.
My whole intent there was to clear up any confusion on these issues, and obviously, that did not work as well as planned, but we'll have to work on that a little bit more. My apologies.
No worries.
My fault.
I'll second it if I think you already.
All right, all right, yes.
We'll just move it along.
All right, very good, second by Mr. Gaffey, Ms. Hamilton, if you please call the roll, it's a motion to adopt, please.
Knappich?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Malta?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Husey?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. And our last item, Resolution 2024-33, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-33, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract for cleaning of three stripping towers and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir, again, this is a $60,000, these scrubbing towers are removal of the VOCs or bolical organic compounds, out of our water is the purpose for them, they do have a company come in, they take all these little balls out, they pressure wash them, put them back in, pretty much the basis of it, we do this annual, again, it's annual cleaning of this, very necessary for our 3.5 million gallons a day of the city usage. So, are there any questions? I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy, Ms. Hamilton, please call the motion to adopt.
Husey?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Malta?
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
All right, resolution 2024-33 has been adopted, so this is now, we're now at the end of our new business section, and ironically, we are now, first time this year, I think, that we actually have a clean slate, that we have nothing pending for next meeting, so I'm sure the city's going to load us up next month for the next meeting, but that's okay.
But they're going to have to work hard to do it.[1445.15][1445.15](laughter)
Yes, they will. All right, well, we move into our miscellaneous portion of our meeting, we had no one sign up to speak at this point, so I'll just turn this over to council members, we'll start with Mr. Husey since we didn't have you here last meeting, do you have any comments or anything?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the nurses at the Women's Pavilion at Worcester Community Hospital for taking care of my wife and I and our newborn, couldn't have asked for a better experience there, highly recommended, and we appreciated everything they did for us.
All right, very good, Mr. Abernathy?
Nothing additional to add, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knappich?
I have a few things, wanted to welcome Angela Huler to the city, the Assistant Mayor Director, that's exciting, and expressed my sorrow that Krista Kidney's found another job because I've worked with her and she just was outstanding with the work that she did with the homeless community here in Worcester, and I am very hopeful and optimistic that someone as good will come in and, and take up the mantle because she did an excellent, excellent job. And then finally, I would like to thank everyone from the city and everyone in the city and around who were kind enough to send flowers and cards and attend my brother's memorial service and contribute to his scholarship campaign, it just really has meant a lot to me and to my family, so thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffey?
Welcome to the, welcome to the city, I didn't get a chance to meet you, the mayor did try and pull me over to introduce me to you, but I was engaged elsewhere, so welcome. Great, other than that, I don't really have anything else to add.
All right, thank you, Ms. Warden?
I just have actually a question for the administration, several people reached out to me over the, the past couple of weeks, there seems to, and maybe I've seen something online about it, but there was maybe a widespread traffic study going on, lots of lines across roadways, is, was that being done by the city or was that by ODOT, was that?
Do you want to hear my story?
Okay.[1593.61][1593.61](laughter)
So what I've been telling people is that for everybody that got the COVID vaccine, the chip that you got then, it reads those and you can track where you're going.
So it's a location device that we're, okay, I got you.[1608.21][1608.21](laughter)
Joel will tell you the real story.
Okay. That's it. So periodically, maybe not every year, but the city works with ODOT to do traffic counts, so, and I'll try to do a real quick, long story is, they use those traffic counts to classify roadways, the arterial collector, and when we come to city council, we'll ask, usually you see a couple pieces of legislation, one is for ODOT money and spend on project, those are for the higher volume roads, and we usually come with smaller roads that we're just spending our general fund money for, but they use those traffic counts to classify the roads and then ultimately figures out how that money's distributed.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation, I have nothing else.
All right, Mr. Malta?
Thank you, I would like to welcome you, thank you for joining us, and I would like to congratulate Steve, and Worcester Hospital does a fantastic job, both my kids were there, so, no further.
All right, and Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Sanders, yeah, welcome, Ms. Huler, we wish you the best of luck and we're glad to have you on board. I went, I attended the planning commission meeting on Thursday, and I just wanted to let folks know that might not know, Charlie Brain, one of our citizens here, who I've known for a long time, got conditional use from the planning commission to operate a, replace the severe weather shelter that was being hosted by Salvation Army at a building that he purchased, best way I can describe it is it's kind of behind the Super 8, down in the flood zone kind of area, but he's going to remodel and renovate that building to help with our housing insecure folks, not only for severe weather, it'll actually be open overnight from, I think he said November 15th through April-ish, depending upon weather, so this is a private endeavor and we're, it is in partnership with the social services agencies like 180, Community Action, and the others that have been participating, the churches and things have been providing meals in the past, so that's going to be a really, really great program to have, was great to see that approved last, last Thursday, and thanks to Charlie and his family for their support of this.
Wow.
Also, I'm going to just make sure I have this right because I have Chief Fisher in the back who can correct me, but I believe this Saturday, no, not this Saturday, the 18th, a week from Saturday, there is going to be a Thin Blue Line Community Walk at Worcester High School, starting at 9:00 in the morning, so come out and support our folks, it is to commemorate the fallen officers, I was there, I think Mr. Reynolds and I were there a couple of years ago, or maybe it was last year or two years ago, I believe, but it's a, it's a good cause, and if you have time on Saturday, it's, it's from 9:00 to noon,